All right, we're back to our regular, normal scheduled meeting, about five minutes late. We had a little audio/video problem, so we had the Pledge of Allegiance, and now I need to get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second. We got any additions? Yes, Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to add a discussion of the no-smoking workshop agenda.
Second. That's under unfinished? We've got the workshop coming up.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
And I have the rest of the discussion. Yeah. Okay. One second. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, say a clap of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got corrections, additions? All right, all those in favor of the minutes that submitted, say a clap of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. We do have a hospital committee report they met today, and I think Michael Mary and Mr. Brock are here to bring us a update on the hospital. If you would state your name for us, and who you are, and all this.
I'm Rock Matthew Bordelone, and I'm the CEO of Allegiance Health Management and owner of the Eureka Springs Hospital.
You want to kind of bring us up to date on what was discussed today at the hospital commission?
Sure. What we're here to do today and speak about is to try to give the board here some options on what we can do to try to do some upgrades to the facility. We've gone and looked at various options for purchasing land and moving, but with the current regulatory environment and changes, we would jeopardize losing our critical access status unless we stayed where we are for location now. So with that being said, basically, the best option that we have is to improve the physical plant where we are now, but we don't own the physical plant, so we're talking to the board and looking at various options of what we can do to try to upgrade the hospital here in Eureka Springs. My vision goal, and what we discussed today, and hopefully we'll embark on going down the road on, is where the oldest building is right now, the one that began construction in 1929, I'm going to call it the three-story building, would be to take that and basically do away with it and put there all of the new patient service areas, namely your emergency room, radiology lab, outpatient services on the first floor, and then on the second floor would be your patient rooms, and of course, new nurses station and all of the ancillary services to support the inpatient unit on the second floor. So that's a brief five-minute overview of what we're looking at trying to embark down, and what we think would be the best fit for what we can do to try to get the hospital upgraded into where they can serve the patients and population here in Eureka Springs for years to come, in a building that's not dilapidated and falling down.
Isn't that where the administrative offices are now?
Yes, sir.
On the second floor?
Yeah, on the first, like, on the basement is where housekeeping and some of those types of services are, on the first floor. They have a couple of radiology services there now, and central supply, I believe it is, and then on the top floor is where admin and billing and AP and all of that is, so...
Where would that all relocate?
What we would do temporarily, we would move all of the non-critical patient service areas off-site, which we've done with other hospitals before, in a remodel such as this, where we'd still be able to do billing and collections, have admin and everything. We actually toured, we went through and toured today, and have a pretty solid game plan on where we can move the ultrasound and other patient services in the existing hospital, or the, what I'm going to call, the newer area of the hospital, where we could temporarily continue those services until the new wing would be built, so the patient services wouldn't be interrupted, administration and all of those functions wouldn't be interrupted, but we would also gain the new patient service areas, which is, to me, what's first and foremost of importance. Then, once all of the new patient service areas would be finished, and we would move those service areas into the new wing, we would take what's the current service areas and make that admin and non-clinical service areas, which would then be in the sixties portion of the hospital, because that's when that portion was built. So, basically, taking, trying to make all new patient service areas, and then put ancillary and non-clinical areas in what's the existing clinical service areas now, would be the long-term goal. And that's what we pitched to the commission today, to look at and to discuss, to see if they have an interest in doing that, or, you know, what we could do to work together to better the facility for the community.
That's an extremely stark move, to take the billing and the soft areas and move them out of the patient areas, because regulatory requirements, those areas don't have the same regulatory requirements as your patient service areas do, and the cost to build is a lot less. So it makes a lot of sense to do that. Are you also looking at a helipad by chance, so you don't have to mess with that parking lot problem?
What we discussed, and they did have a couple of architectural guys there today, is looking at the possibility of putting the helipad on top of the second story.
Above the ER.
Yes, sir. So whenever they would, you know, when they're going to do guestimates and give us an idea of what the cost and layouts would be, they're going to go ahead and structure it to where the helipad can be on top of the second story.
How many new beds, how many beds are you shooting for now?
What we're looking at trying to do is do 12 patient rooms. We would license them as semi-private, but for the most part, for the census that we have now, it would be, you know, private rooms until we would get over 12 patients.
Are you still going to keep swing beds along with your acute care?
Yes, sir.
So do you think, so 12 beds is going to cover swing bed and acute?
It'll be 12 rooms, but it would be 24 total beds.
24.
Yes, sir. And the max license for critical access is 25, is what we would go up to, so we're thinking to do 12 rooms.
And how many ER rooms?
Right now, we have three. I would like to increase that, because right now, there are many times that they're having to spill over into patient rooms, whenever they're busy. So I'm thinking to go to six rooms, but before, I'm going to commit to saying, this is what I think we need to do, we're doing studies, so that we'll make sure at our peak times, what our amounts of overflow are, so that we can make sure we accommodate everyone appropriately.
Do you do any ops beds off the emergency room, or are you just going to use some of your inpatient beds for observation off the ER?
Yeah, once they go to observation, we'll transition them over into patient rooms, and either convert them into inpatient or discharge them.
Are you going to do any type of procedural rooms? You have to have an endoscopy room, you're still doing endo, aren't you?
Yes, well, right now, they already have an OR suite and what I'm going to call an endo suite.
But, yeah, but it wouldn't be, it didn't sound like you're going to move it to the newer area, or are you going to?
We, that's up for debate right now, so we're not, I'm not 100% sure.
Because that's pretty expensive.
Yeah, because, you know, OR suites are very expensive, so the one that they have now is a little bit small, but it's very functional.
But it's functional for endo?
So it's one of those things that we're going to look at, and we'll be studying, if it makes sense, and if there's room to put it in the new space, we would do that, or we may just leave it where it is. So to answer your question, I'm not 100% sure on that particular service.
Because you only do endo in that room, basically, because you're not doing any surgical procedures.
Correct.
So most of your business is outpatient with a little inpatient?
Yes, sir. It's about 60% outpatient right now.
So you're talking about, then, probably a building, it's to redo and everything, you're talking about probably eight to 10 million?
I'm going to say somewhere, as I explained today, depending on the base, and if we're going to have to go in and redo anything to the foundation, it's going to be a big deciding factor. If we don't have to do a bunch of that, I'm going to say it'll be six, seven million plus, depending on what we'd have to do to the foundation.
And, you know, your helipad is cheaper if you put it off the roof.
Yes, sir. Much.
As old as that hospital is, would it structurally support a helipad on the top?
Well, what's going to happen is, what's there now, we'll have to literally tear it down and replace it with new construction on where the oldest part is now, and so when they would build it, it would be able to support it.
Okay, so it's like rebuilding an old wing to make it supportive.
Yes, ma'am.
I like the parking lot idea better. And I have used the hospital many, 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 many times.
Terry?
So that's what you're, that's what I wasn't clear on, is that you're talking about demolishing the existing structure, the oldest part, and rebuilding it in three levels? Is that what I heard you say?
We would look at doing it in two levels, but yes, sir, and I know that that's going to take a lot of approvals, and city approval, and whenever they do the designs and everything, try to figure out if it's doable.
Yeah. Are you, are you thinking about, you know, buying the hospital from the city? Is that what you're wanting to do?
No, sir. I haven't entertained that idea. I'm not saying that we wouldn't, but that becomes a burdensome, tedious process in and of itself, because I can't buy it from you directly. You guys would have to put it out for bid, which means Washington Regional, Mercy, anybody could come in and buy it, and buy the building, and, you know, there's multiple discussions on what would happen. Washington Regional did have it at one time in the past, and you guys took it back over. So for the purposes of today, the basic premise was, talking about, we would help look at doing, helping the commission look and seek and retain funding.
How do you go about getting that funding?
What we've done, and what we've been successful as a company in doing, is going in and doing R&amp;D-type loans, which are governmental guaranteed loans, and we did, I recently acquired three new hospitals doing that within the last...
You do that?
Yes.
You borrow the money?
Correct.
Against a facility you don't own?
No, sir. In the case here, I wouldn't be borrowing the money. It would be the commission that would be actually borrowing the money, and then we would come in and do a lease agreement that would be commensurate with whatever the terms of the loan would be, and whatever fair market value would be deemed once everything goes through.
I don't think the commission can, because it's a city-owned property, and the commission doesn't have any control.
Say you would have to go through that process.
Yeah, the city would have to go through that process, because the commission has no control of the hospital. And then, at the same time, all the building, because the city owns it, then has to meet all the codes and the bids, it's going to be a very laborsome process, not that you sure can't do it. It would be a lot better if you'd just buy the place and fix it.
I'm okay with that.
We'll give you a good deal.
Sounds good to me, and if y'all want to put it out there, I'd be more than happy to consider it.
Just keep in mind the clauses, say you have to keep it as an active hospital. That would be one of the clauses.
And we've actually done that before, too, and when we've acquired the building and sought R&amp;D funds, included remodel, renovations, upgrades, and got it all up front, and did it in that manner as well, so we've done both models. And the purpose that we came for today is to open the door to discussions on what can we do. These are the options that we're faced with. It pretty much needs to be where it is now, and so how do we go about doing it from there is what we're looking at trying to work with everyone to figure out.
I just wanted to give you a compliment while you're here. I honestly believe that hospital, based on my experience, is there because Allegiance is managing it, plain and simple. There are two things happened in the past that saved that hospital. One, they got critical access, which was the main, and number two, they got a company to manage it that could manage it correctly, instead of having just the local group of people who thought they knew about health care and all of the requirements that it takes. And moving in there, and the fact that you can cost shift some of your costs into it, the fact that you go in without patients, the fact that you put emergency room physicians in to free the physicians up to stay in their office where they make money, instead of messing with their offices and coming over and taking emergency patients, has all added to the hospital and its ability to serve the community. So I think you should...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, and to elaborate a little bit on what you said, and that I said at lunch today, just for everyone's information, our cost shifting from home office, per the Medicare cost report, averages about $900,000 a year, of which we've had to leave between $350,000 and $400,000 a year here, which basically covers the indigent care and indigent services for patients that don't have the ability to pay. Otherwise, the hospital would be short to that extent every year, because, as you know, Medicare pays a little 101%, Medicaid is 100%, and commercial, because it's a low-volume hospital, you don't really make money on commercial patients either, so indigents end up costing the hospital, and you lose, but the cost shifting has enabled us to cover the indigent services, about $30,000 a month.
Oh, absolutely. I don't think people here understand, the payer mix in this community is not nothing to write home about, and an emergency room definitely is an open door to what resources you have in the hospital. So luckily, you don't have a surgery room, and you don't have all the specialists, because you can ship those people on out and get them out of there, triage them and move them.
Yes, sir.
So that helps you. So you're making your money off of really, most of the outpatient business is where you're getting your money.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ford?
Are you, I'm not sure what studies you have to do. I understand about the removal, the demolition, what that's going to cause, what you'll have to do to redo the foundations to put up a new structure, and it'd probably be all from scratch, would be my guess. So you're going to have some engineering studies done? Is that something that you're going to try and find, or you're wanting the city to do? Or are you, you're not there yet?
What we discussed today is, for the preliminary studies and everything, the commission, we are asking the commission to do that, at least at this point, because it's their asset and their building, so we're asking them to look at doing it.
In your experience, what do those things run? I kind of have some ideas of what you spent on the old Ramada, or Forerunners, or whatever you want to call that old hotel out there.
Depends on how far we want to go into the engineering, and how detailed of a specific amount for total construction that we want to do. What I told them today, to get a good, solid number, that would be relatively concrete, I'm going to guesstimate somewhere around the $30,000 range. You know, it may be a little bit more than that, it may be a little bit less, depending on what specifics that we want to get in going into it.
And I think that's entirely up to them to approve that. I don't think, that's our bailiwick of the hospital.
See, I don't know if the hospital commission can at this point. They got, the ambulance thing, evidently got the attorney, told him about buying the ambulance, wasn't within line, so hopefully you will check with your health care attorney guru to see if you can start the process of the hospital and start moving some...
We'll have Mr. Mary come up here in just a moment. We got any more questions or comments?
It'll be interesting to see, but your thoughts of going along this line to engage the city in a long-term situation of revitalizing and rebuilding a new facility for the people of the community is admirable. It's got a lot of hurdles, but it's going to be interesting.
Yes, sir. It does, it has a lot of hurdles, and it's going to be a lot of work, but we're willing to put in the time and effort to help, and do what we can to help make sure that the people of Eureka Springs have health care services for years to come.
Any other comments for...
No, thank you, Mr. Ford.
Mr. Mary?
Well, I would just encourage the commission and you to talk to the historic district commission, because the demolition of the old hospital is going to, I would think, have a significant impact on the historic district.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mary, you want to come up and...
It's probably contributing. Pretty sure it is.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having us here tonight. I didn't intend to speak, so I frankly don't have much prepared to say. I would say, as the commission chair, we sat this afternoon, listened to Allegiance and Mr. Bordelone, and as a commission, we have not discussed this issue any further. We've simply, as most of us here, been on pins and needles on the edge of our seat, waiting to find out what the suggested offer might be. My personal feelings on the subject, if you're interested, is that this is probably not a bad suggestion, in that the commission's primary goal is to make sure that we, as a community, have health care, and health care that we can count on. We currently have that. Over the last 10 years, last 12 years of relationships with companies and now Allegiance, we finally have someone on board that is doing a wonderful job for our community. We have good hospital services, not only for us, but our outlying members as well. But the one thing that we really need to keep in mind is that our current structure, although as the longest operating hospital in the state of Arkansas, also has some serious drawbacks in engineering that need to be overcome if we're going to continue to use the building for the foreseeable future. We've pretty much run the idea of building a new structure through the washing machine to the point that it's just beat to death at this point. The idea of somebody coming in with our current political structure and the change in medical, the way that medicine is operated in the rural environment is changing rather dramatically, and expecting someone to spend $25 to $30 million building a new facility would be hard-pressed to find someone to do. We all are aware of the other issues that we face. We can't close the door of the hospital for one moment, or we'd lose our license. So this construction process would allow us to keep the doors open while we build a facility that will last us for the next 50 years. Sir?
I have one question for either or both of you. What is the possibility of using the existing plant and getting it?
I have been operating personally under the assumption that the historical society would not allow us to change the outer fascia of the building, and as a result, the suggestion right now that's on the table still leaves the exterior and visible walls in position, and the parts that will be redesigned are not parts that would be visible.
So you're not talking about complete demolition, or you were, or we're not?
For that one wing, yes, it would go down, and we'll have to look at figuring out what we need to do when we reconstruct the walls, if it needs to have a similar look as to what it looks like now, or what we need to do so that it still has the historic look, but with the new inside, so that we can have what we need for patient services going into the future. And when you're talking about existing with three ER bays, for example, you know, there's really not much we can do within the existing confines of what we have now to add to that other than completely redoing it. Same thing with patient rooms and things of that nature. So the best viable option would be to go in, and where the oldest wing is, that's literally fallen down and has cinder blocks half-broken on it, it needs to be revamped and fixed.
Michael, for somebody that had a 1950s hospital and was looking to build a new one, it was going to cost twice as much to build, rebuild the old one than it did the brand-new one, so we built the new one behind, the complete new one, behind the old one, and then turned the old one into a parking lot, literally. And it sounds terrible, but the bottom line was, it was so grossly, from the wiring to the support for the computers, it became just an unbelievable nightmare, and it worked so much better with the health department and all those people.
I can well imagine.
Because new construction is just, is the way to go.
Well, believe me, the suggestion is so new to all of us that any of the possibilities that are out there are up for discussion. As the commission chair, I see this as a viable way to reconstruct our hospital, so we know it'll be there in 50 years. Nobody's going to have to take money out of their pockets. The commission funds will stay in the bank where they belong, and the existing lease funds that Allegiance is currently paying, in addition to probably some degree of increase in those lease funds, would be the payee to the loan. So the city wouldn't be out anything in the process. We would be guaranteeing a facility to be here for a long time to come, in addition to a long-term lease with Allegiance, knowing that they're going to be here to pay it. Excuse me, sir.
Well, I'm just, I assume, I mean, you guys put the pencil to it, you know, off 24 potential beds, and to come in and invest $10 million, or whatever it would be, you know, as a ballpark figure, just as something to throw out there, can you make money?
As I explained at lunch today, the hospital is a critical access hospital, so it doesn't make a profit. It makes a 1% Medicare profit, you get 101% of cost, 100% of Medicaid cost. The benefit is the cost shifting. So what will happen is, is once we have our new structure, we have our new lease in place, and those things are going forth, that becomes part of the cost, an ongoing cost for operating the hospital, and as long as we're operating under our ceilings that are set forth via the cost report, then we will get 100% or 101% of the cost for those services reimbursed, including the lease. So a critical access hospital's not designed to make a bunch of money. I'm not going to make a 10% or 14% return. I'm not going to make a return other than the ability for me to shift costs for my salary, for Don's salary, and for Allegiance's overhead over here. And as I said earlier, we do recoup a portion of that, but we leave about 40% of our allocated costs here for energy care. So is a new facility going to make me more money? No. Is a new facility going to be good for the people of Eureka Springs? Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Just one comment. So we're, obviously, based on the feedback you got here, y'all will start developing towards that potential option? There will be movement, finally?
Absolutely. Again, as the commission chair, it would be very comforting to see city council very supportive of this before we made any moves in any direction. If you folks agree that this is a direction that we should move in, then I'm guessing that the commission will agree to do so also.
To motivate you towards that angle, I'll go ahead and make a motion that the hospital commission... commission start engaging for details with Allegiance to develop a plan for the renovation and expand, or the renovation of the existing hospital facility.
Thank you.
I'll second that. If the hospital commission is going to essentially take the responsibility for renovating the hospital itself and then leasing it to you, does that have to be put out to bid?
I don't think that's what they're saying.
Well, correct me. That's what I understood. Please correct me if that's not what you're saying.
I'm not sure I understand your question either.
Well, as I appreciated, you were asking the hospital commission to undertake the renovation. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So the taking out of the loan to do the renovation of the hospital would be done by the hospital commission?
That is correct. We were, the commission works as agents of the city of Eureka Springs on behalf of the city. And yes, the commission would take on the responsibility of the loan itself.
Then you would be leasing a turnkey facility, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, and then my question was, if that is the case, would that have to be put out to bid?
Yes. It's city property.
Yeah.
Construction has to be.
Sure.
Now, not the construction, I'm talking about the lease being put out to bid.
No, ma'am. I assure you, the lease would not have to be put out to bid in that the commission is not required to do business with anyone. We would choose at the end of this lease period to either continue to do business with Allegiance or find another health care service provider, rather than go back in the business of running a hospital ourselves. But we're not required to put out a bid to anyone or accept an offer from anyone to operate.
In actuality, it won't be the hospital commission that borrows the money, it has to be the city.
Yes, absolutely.
But we would...
But I think we, they actually, you're on the hook for it? Is that right? Indirectly?
The commission is on the hook for it through our income as leasing our licenses.
I understand that, but the city's the one that actually has to... The hospital commission can't own anything. Hospital commission doesn't own the hospital. Now the city does.
Right. The city's responsible for that, and we'd be based it on the lease payments guaranteeing that.
Right.
So yes, the city.
What you're asking, saying?
That you would need the lease in place before the purchase.
Yeah.
All the agreements would have to be in place prior to breaking ground.
And going to any type of USDA or R and D, you're going to have to have that in place anyway from the beginning.
Sure.
And that's some of the details we'll be working through and that we've done in the past, that I've done as recently as last September.
I would imagine at that time, you have to have your engineering, you probably have to have plans and everything, don't you?
Yes, sir.
When you take it. So all your drawings and all be complete. So you'll have, you may have $30,000 in preliminary, but you may have another 100-plus in those.
Yes, ma'am. And when you do that, that becomes a part of the loan that's going to go in.
It's rolled into it. But you still, but they're not going to do it for now, they're going to have to pay it on the front end. Most engineering firms, or architects or engineering firms are not going to carry that for any length of time, which, and it may take, what, a year, 18 months, two years to get the process through?
So actually...
You know, historically, you know what that timeframe is.
I would say that within a year, we would be ready to...
Break ground?
Work on construction. Yes, sir.
You could wonder if you could do a bond issue.
Okay, basically what it comes down to, they want to do this to the hospital, they have the tie-in to the loan people. We, as the city, have to, because it's our property, have to say, yes, we want to borrow this money. Our lease agreement slash contract is with Allegiance, who swears in writing that they will be paying all this money back to us that we have to come up with. If they decide they're going to close the doors and walk out, they still have to pay us, which we would take that money and pay the loan people. So it's not costing the city anything more than the ink to sign the paper, is what it comes down to.
Other than the lease fee income that we currently appreciate, that would no longer be income, but there would be no other expenditures.
There's also the element of risk. I mean, you know, I mean, something could happen.
It's their risk, that's what the lease agreement is.
We also run the risk that, for some reason, if they fold up, then we're on the hook.
And how many hospitals do y'all have?
I'm not saying.
Okay. But that's a thing, they're not going to fold them all.
Part of the reasoning behind why, I think it's, the timing is right, is because we have been here almost 10 years.
I agree. I know, I think you have the track record. I'm not arguing that.
So we have a, we have a motion. We were just, did we get a second?
Yeah. You want to call?
I think I'm going to call the question. We've...
Would you repeat the motion?
And Eric?
Then we have them activate, looking into this and getting stuff ready.
Let David summarize it, please.
David, you want to repeat the question? Repeat the motion, please?
Repeat the motion, okay. The motion is, is that we go ahead and start the engagement between the commission and Allegiance towards the renovation and building of a new facility in Eureka Springs.
Before we get a second?
I already seconded it.
I think at this point, you're overstepping what this council has the authority. If they want to look into it, they can look into it, but I don't think you can direct them to do that.
Or endorse it.
They serve at our, that council serves at our pleasure. It's not an independent, we, so they serve at our pleasure. We can disband them even. So giving a motion that gives them the comfort that we're behind them, I don't see that there's a problem with that.
There's not a problem with giving them your blessing. There's a problem with ordering them to do something.
Ask them to.
Ask them, not order.
Oh, just endorse it then, whatever.
You all get the idea.
All right. I have a motion that, to support the hospital commission to investigate
Yes.
renovation of the existing hospital.
I was going to, Mary, I'll second that.
I already seconded the motion.
I think that's what David said.
That's what you said. I thought it was funny. I didn't know he was a ventriloquist.
Yeah. I guess we're just telling you to get to work.
At the first opportunity, I'll re-present myself to the council for more information as it arrives.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Somebody? All right, thank y'all. Thank you very much.
It was nice to finally meet you after all these years of dealing with the hospital.
Sorry for the lack of voice tonight. I've had the flu last week.
Glad you're better. Especially since you're a hospital person. You've been a lot of good sick. Bye, y'all. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys. All right. Next order of business is public comments. I guess Miss Kim went out to...
I think we had them. Did we scare them off?
Not soon.
Are they out there?
Yeah.
So much of them. Here till midnight.
Go ahead and start and state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Leon Burt. I live at 15 East Mountain Drive. To mayor, baron members of the city government, I had submitted a rebuttal to a discussion my neighbor Ray Bottomley had with you on March 13th, 2017. Look at it or not, I am before you this evening to suggest a possible solution for your consideration. Former alderman James DeVito was quoted in The Independent on July 13th of last year, saying that the mandate of the planning commission and the city council is to protect the citizens of Eureka Springs. Protecting residential neighborhoods is imperative to the welfare of the community. We are a living, breathing town with people who live and work here. I believe Mr. DeVito was right on. There are opposing points of view regarding the speed bumps on East Mountain Drive, their placement and effectiveness. Given the months needed to accrue the recently submitted signatures, I think the opposing point of view could achieve the same result. This would get us nowhere toward resolution and resident safety. In fairness to both parties, I suggest the planning commission and the police department study the issue objectively and implement a solution that both parties would accept. This would be exercising the mandate of city government, Mr. DeVito strongly referred to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lamont Ritchie, 138 Deer Lane. I'm here to talk about water and sewer rates, since I won't be able to make the public hearing on Wednesday. Concerning rates, let's look at some of where we've been to be able to understand where we are now and where this council wants to go. From 2008 forward, excluding grant funds, general fund transfers, and debt service, the water department has had an average annual net operating income of almost $158,000, an average of $158,000. For that same period, the sewer department has had an average net operating loss of almost $82,000. That alone should lead one to believe that water rates have been too high and sewer rates have been too low. During that same period, the city has been paying on two bond issues. One was issued in 2000, and it was issued to cover three projects primarily, all related to sewer work. Then there was another bond issue in 2002. And from the minutes of the public hearing for that bond issue, Mary Jean Sale asked Kim Dickens to clarify what these lines would, what lines this money would go toward. Ms. Dickens said only sewer lines. I've examined financial records relating to the water and sewer department because of the sales tax proposal last fall. I've also re-examined the extensive notes that I kept from 2007, when Yvonne Klein and I undertook the process to figure why in early 2007, the city was down to its last $5,000 in the water and sewer bond fund, and we still had $2 million to come up with to finish that project. And I've looked to see if there's some justification, some logic, behind the current rate structure, because unless it is already fair and equitable, it won't become that simply by applying an across-the-board percentage increase or an arbitrary fixed amount. I couldn't. It's not in the minutes, it's not in the ordinance of setting the rates. If there is justification for the rate structure, I can't find it. But yet you're planning to charge, to change rates, but how do you know that what you already have is fair and equitable? Think about what the average revenue numbers I gave you. They show that water revenue has been used to underpin not only the operations of the sewer department, but also the payment on the indebtedness that seems to have benefited the sewer as sewer customers almost exclusively. How is that fair, especially to the 581 water customers, of which I'm one, who receive no sewer benefits whatsoever? My home on Deer Lane represents one of those 585 accounts out of 214. I object to any fee increase until y'all figure out whether or not you have a fair and equitable rate structure.
I live on Spur Lane in the city. And I'm here tonight with my wife, Joyce Knowles, to talk to you about the sewer and water rates. And I ask you to do away with the antiquated tier system that places an unfair burden and restriction on the small user. The current rates require small users to purchase 2,000 gallons of water, whether they use it or not. And also the same with sewer access. They're required to purchase 2,000 gallons of water to pour into the sewer, whether they use it or not. These rates don't allow the small users any ability to control the size of their water or sewer bill by adjusting their usage. For many years, I taught at the university level statistics, and my wife, Joyce Knowles, was an insurance underwriter, estimating risks and, from occurrences and losses. We looked at many different ways to structure the sewer and water rates for Eureka Springs, including some very complicated schemes, and we ended up believing that the simplest system was the most equitable and workable system for water and sewer rates. For water rates, we propose that you look at charging water users a fixed water rate per gallon. The rate per gallon is the amount of money that it costs the city to provide a gallon of water to its users. To calculate it, one divides all of the water costs by the number of gallons sold. A water user's bill then becomes the cost per gallon multiplied by the number of gallons used. These numbers can be calculated for each billing period or estimated for the whole year. Similarly, for sewer rates, we propose that you look at a fixed sewer rate per gallon. To calculate this, one divides all of the sewer costs, including the bond principal and interest, by the number of gallons of water billed for the sewer system. The fixed-rate gallon method does away with tiers and charges the same amount for every gallon, the first gallon someone uses, the last gallon someone uses. The first gallon by the smallest user, the last gallon by the largest user. You use a gallon, you pay for a gallon. It's more equitable than the current system for low-use customers. It allows all customers the ability to control their sewer bill by controlling their water usage. It is by design sufficient to raise the revenues to meet the full cost of water and sewer. It is easy to calculate and explain, and it can easily and rationally adjust, be adjusted to cover system-wide changes in use levels or expenses. And it's equitable for every user. Thank you.
That's it.
All right, that concludes the public comments. Is Justin out there?
Yes.
All right. All right, first order of new business is, it says proclamation, but it's really a discussion for a special election to keep the parks taxed. If I can get a motion to discuss?
So much.
Get a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Justin, you want to tell us where we are and what we're doing here?
Sure.
What you want?
Appreciate the agenda item tonight. Coming here today, the Parks and Recreation Department had the four-year sunset tax for Leatherwood Improvements, which is coming to its end. And we are, for obvious reasons, interested in rerunning that issue via special election. Again, we feel we have accountability and we can demonstrate what we've done with that money, and we have some high-dollar projects yet to do. We had considered, we're looking at possibly rerunning the tax issue with the city, splitting with that, and that's kind of pushed our dates back a little while. And as our city attorney can speak to, we found ourselves in a little bit of a gray area and fuzziness and trying to make sure we knew exactly what and where with this. So what we have determined and what we need to do... So what we have determined and what we need to do is we can have a call special election by council ordinance proclamation and some other things on that. So what we've, would like to do and request from the council is to get an ordinance through so we can put this on the ballot in June, is our goal. Now with that, the process of that, as we said, we thought we could do proclamation, but the ordinance has a little more, has better legal bearing to it. It would require to do an emergency clause, not tonight. We could do the second, or first and second reading perhaps, or third, I'd leave that to council if that was so favorable to y'all, to allow some time to discuss it, if everybody would be comfortable with that, and then we'd still have time to make a June deadline. The reason the June deadline is important is because the collections continue through there, keeping it intact, making it a renewal instead of a new issue. If it doesn't go by that, then we'd be facing a new issue, which would require petition and upcoming, and a, and a big lapse in, in collections for us as well, so. But that's kind of in a nutshell what we're trying to, to look at, and certainly, you know, questions or concerns or comments or.
June 30th the goal?
13th.
13th.
It's the second Tuesday. Unless it's an even year, then it's the 4th of June, then it's the 4th Tuesday of June. Right, that's, that's, that's the election, special elections must be held on the second Tuesday of each month, unless it's a holiday, then the 3rd.
Second Tuesday is the 13th.
Greg?
What, what money are you expecting to be generated by this?
The four, the four-year total for this collection's going to be about $535,000, which we've, have an additional almost $200,000 that we've gotten in matches from that collections as well.
You had matching money for that, too?
We had, we had matching funds for the playground, for the road into the park, and a few other trail projects and things of that, which was 175, 185-ish, I believe, something like that. We got our final one from Parks and Tourism, so, in that ballpark, so.
So this is a big bulk of your operating expenses?
For leatherwood. This is a leatherwood-specific improvement. This was passed again by the voters four years ago. This is capital, this is everything capital improvement-wise at leatherwood. This is renovations, fix, you know, structures, road, sewer, dam, dredging, things like that in the future that aren't quite as glamorous, but are high-dollar items that will, that are on the near horizon that, that will need to be done.
David?
Want to add Black Bass Dam to that group?
We can't do that at this point because that's a new, that's outside.
But if you did, the election is possible, no, still can.
It would have to be.
Be a new initiative.
Be a new initiative.
So you're just wanting to do a special election just to extend the sunset of that?
Exactly.
Okay. My, my question would be, knowing the timeframes and, and everything, I, it just seems like it's always, it's, unless I'm wrong, it seems like it's always a last-minute thing and it's a rush and we have to hurry and we're under a timeframe, and you would have thought if you wanted this, you would have thought about it sooner, instead of trying to have us do emergency clauses and push it through. That, I just have a little.
Absolutely.
That is kind of irritating to me.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And to, on Park's behalf, we did discuss this when we were talking about having a special election for ourselves, and Park said, this tax is going to be coming up, and we're going to have to do something about it, and we'd like to piggyback onto it. And they have been working the last month, six weeks or more, yeah, trying to get their ducks in the order to, to do this, so. It's, it is the first time the council has heard it, but they have been working on it for quite a while.
And that is regrettable, David. I, I do.